Board of Selectmen for October 2 at 7:00 PM. Could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark will go ahead and do the community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Before going on to citizen participation, I neglected to do the announcements, pardon me. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. Their opening on several committees, please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for listing and application. Now we'll move into citizen participation. This is the time each meeting we start off with. We have set aside five, 10 minutes for members of the public to go ahead and address the board on any subject they choose. We do ask to keep the comments to three minutes in case there's more people wanting to storm up and address the board. So, who would like to speak? Come on down. Name and address.
Yes, sir.
Oh, God, please don't call me sir.
Nancy Ryan, Three Presidents Way. It's funny, Alan, I listened to you say that you're looking for volunteers for different committees, and I cannot get on a committee or a board in this town. I filled out an application to go on the Committee for Disabilities, that didn't work out. I also filled out an application to be put to go on the Board of Directors. I come to the meetings every month, and I had served on the Board of Directors a few years ago. And it's really odd that two people got on the board and after I had filled out my application. I don't know why I can't get on the board. I've been so active in the Council on Aging, I know just about everything that's going on in there, and it's really, it's a problem. And the Director of the Council on Aging told me that the group of you referred to us as troublemakers. And I don't consider us troublemakers if that's the way the board looks at us. I'm sorry, but we are trying to do the best we can to keep this COA active. We are not going to get a new building, we know that, we know it's another 10 years. Since the meeting last April, nothing has been done at the COA, nothing. I don't know what's going on, I don't know why we're just being ignored. And, you know, we've elected all you people, you, I personally know everybody but Dave Robinson. I never considered myself a troublemaker. I just want, I think we all want, what's best, and we want to be able to stay at the Council on Aging. And at the same time, I don't want to be blackballed anymore. I have done nothing, but I feel positive things to help the COA in any way I can, so that's what I come with tonight. I have called, I called you one time, I told you my concerns, and you said you were going to talk to another board member. I never heard back. I called you a second time, I left a message, and I was told by somebody who was talking to you and Ron that the reason you didn't call me back was you didn't have my telephone number. So where do we go? We have no advocates, nobody, nobody's taken an interest in us. And I know we get talked about and we're called nasty names because we go out on Facebook. We have no advocates. We have no advocates whatsoever who really care about the seniors in this town. That is pathetic, because someday, there's going to be a lot of you people who might want to come to a COA in Carver and won't have one. So that's all I have to say, just getting my two cents out.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
General comment, yes, because it's not on the agenda. If it's something we want to put on a future agenda, that might be something...
I just wanted to make a comment that I, for one, have never called you ladies anything. I've never called you any names, so.
And, yeah, it wasn't very pleasant that you referred to us as a bunch of troublemakers, because I mean, we've never done anything but try and be positive, not many times. But that's, well, we're going to be called, man, so be it.
Anybody else wish to participate in citizen participation? Seen no one coming forward, yes, Mr. Milonowski?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to make any comments or hold those to another meeting?
Hold them.
No, they're not here.
Oh.
Yeah, they're holding.
Oh, okay, we're going to have to speak up and, I think we should make this, we might want to make this an agenda item on a future meeting, and then we can discuss it more fully. I'd rather not get into, you know, this person says this, and that person says that, than, you know, give everybody a chance to think about what was told to us tonight and, you know, how we can correct that.
Yeah, and I think I just...
So I'm going to ask you not to make any comment on it tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next we're going to hear from the town clerk, going to talk about election and security, talking about the level of voting security for our process and the actual ballot machines.
Good evening.
Good evening. Want to pull the mic a little closer to you, please?
Sure. So I was asked by Ron Clark about a week ago about security in elections, and I started getting into it to just come up with a little blurb for you folks, and it ended up being four pages. Sorry, you got what you asked for.
Yeah, bullshitting.
So anyways, you hear a lot of, you know, news reporting and so forth, and I'm not blaming just the news reporters, but you hear a lot of chit-chat about people hacking into the computers and the election equipment and so forth, Russians, whatever. And so there is a lot of people who are questioning that. And so I did a little digging, and on top of what we do on a regular basis, came up with a little bit of information for you folks, I think will help alleviate some of the concerns, but, so, there are some important facts about elections and the election security that the residents of Carver and indeed all of Massachusetts...
Lynn, you're going to talk, I mean, you're going to talk more into the microphone, please.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
That's better.
There you go. Sorry. Indeed, even all of Massachusetts should probably be more aware of, because it affects all of Massachusetts. Every community in Massachusetts is a paper ballot community, one that is not connected to the Internet. Massachusetts hesitates to employ unchecked technologies, and this has helped to protect us from cyber attacks. Voting devices such as touchscreen terminals connected to the Internet, for instance, have proven to be more vulnerable to attacks. That is not something we have in Massachusetts, you'll see it in some states, but not Massachusetts. The voting machines we use are of one, only one of two possible models certified by the Secretary of State's office. We refer to these as tabulators, that's what we call them, because they're not actual voting machines, that would be more like those touchscreen machines that you see in other states. Our tabulators were chosen via a competitive quote process, and were tested by the factory, the distributor, and the State Elections Division. The tabulators are not connected to the Internet, they have no wire connections other than to a power outlet. In the case of a power failure, each tabulator is equipped with a battery backup. In accordance with Mass. general laws, many steps are taken to prevent problems and to protect the integrity of the election process. Prior to every election, each and every city and town clerk's office tests every piece of equipment used on Election Day. Mark used to be on the Town Committee, Republican Town Committee, and so you might recall us notifying you of the test dates. This includes the tabulators, the auto-mark, which is the voter-assist terminal that helps to mark a ballot for somebody who is sight impaired, backup batteries, the precinct memory cards, the backup memory cards for the tabulators, as well as the memory card for the auto-mark machine. To test the equipment, we use what we call test decks. For state primary election, my office is required to create test decks of 50 ballots per party, per precinct, and run through every tabulator to certify each machine is correctly reading every position that could be marked on that ballot. And by certify, I mean I participate in, examine, and review all aspects of the testing, complete and sign a state document attesting to the fact that this process was completed in the town of Carver with the, with the results attached. Of those 50 ballots per party, we include absentee ballots and ballots marked by the auto-mark machine, so that we can assure that those will go in through the AccuVote machines, the tabulators at the end of the day. For the state primary on September 4, we had a Democratic, a Republican, and a Libertarian ballot, so we marked and tested 150 ballots per precinct. So it's quite time-consuming, it's, you know, very tedious. We go through every single marking scenario that we can think of, we do overvotes, like mark two positions on a vote for one, on a position to see if it will kick out, kick back, so it will come out as an error. So we do a lot of testing. For the general election in November, my office will test 50 ballots per precinct, because there's only one ballot. And early voting ballots will be included in the test along with absentee and ballots marked by the auto-mark machine. So we take the early voting ballots that we'll be using in October as well. Every single ballot is accounted for, we record what is delivered to my office, the ballots used for testing, and every ballot voted or spoiled on Election Day. So all of those ballots that we use during testing, we record that we've used those ballots. All of our election equipment, supplies, and ballots are stored in a vault before, during, and after an election, and only three people have access to that vault, and that's my staff and myself. On Election Day, myself and my assistant will meet with a uniformed Carver police officer. The police officer takes the ballots and voting tabulators in the police vehicle and transfers them to the polling, polling location where the wardens and other election workers are waiting. At least 30 minutes before the polls open, under public observation and with a police officer present, the precinct wardens open all compartments on the ballot box to show they are empty. Then they lock the compartments and turn on the tabulators. This is also recorded by the precinct clerks that we have in each precinct, so whenever there's a problem, the precinct clerk records, you know, paper jam or any, any problem at When the tabulator is turned on, it will generate a zero tape to show no votes have been added. The zero tapes are posted in the polling location to every, for everybody's viewing, so you'll see them posted on the walls at the beginning of the day. At the end of the election, a final vote count tape is printed and posted for viewing as well. The numbers on this tape are considered unofficial since the election workers are still tallying write-ins. The official totals may not be completed for four to 10 days, depending on the type of election, but it is often sooner. After tallying is complete, the poll, at the polls, all tabulators, ballots, and other election materials are returned to my office by the Carver police officer assigned at the end of the day. So nothing is really left alone throughout the day. There's always observation, there's always a police officer, there's wardens, there's precinct clerks, and there's even the public that can view the opening of the ballot box and the closing at the end of the night. If any concerns arise about the unofficial results we report on an election night, a candidate, or in the case of a ballot question, any registered voter has the right to initiate a petition for a recount. There are some restrictions, but essentially a recount is a hand count of votes for either a particular position, question, maybe in only one precinct, or sometimes an entire election. In fact, I have participated in this process several times in the town of Carver during town elections as well as state, because the candidates' totals were so close. Some of you might remember those recounts. During this time, the voted ballots themselves are secured from the morning of Election Day to the end of the recount, as are the voting machines. There are election workers, board of registrars, attorneys, the town clerk, police officers, and the public, always present to observe a recount process. This is possible because we have a paper ballot system. Finally, the state's voter registration information system is a closed system, also not connected to the Internet. Voter registration itself, the lists of registered voters that we generate for Election Day, and all election-related data are contained in that closed system, accessible only through a private line between my office and Boston. This holds true in every city and town in the Commonwealth, so that we, we are connected to that system rather than via an Internet IP address connection. The security of this system is monitored by security analysts at the State Elections Division. All of us involved with elections are doing everything we can to protect the integrity of this fundamental right. The Massachusetts State Elections Division is diligent in training and disseminating information to 351 cities and towns that run the elections. They give great focus to supporting the city and town clerks in their efforts to make voting a great experience for everyone. I would like to encourage everyone to vote, and yes, by the way, your vote does count, so. You have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Ron?
How old are the machines that we have now?
They are about 10 years old.
And do they need, are they, they need repair much, or do they operate pretty well, or...
They are, they operate very well. They operate perfectly, actually. The vendor comes out annually and tests them and services them to make sure everything's working properly. And then again, we test them all the time before elections as well. So they are working well. We have three, we have one for each precinct, and then we have a backup in case something does go awry. The problem is, I put into Capitol LA, I think, a year ago, or maybe this year, for this year's budget, yeah, for this year's budget, for possibly five new voting machines, tabulators, because they are no longer going to be servicing them in so many years, and they haven't committed to the number of years yet, but they said anywhere is from four to five years, so I'm not sure what that means. There's a lot of people who still have them, but, you know, we, I prefer not to get them during a presidential election year, because it would be a new, a new software and a new hardware that the election workers would have to learn how to operate.
And you said five instead of four. Why the five?
Well, I put in for five only with the anticipation that the census 2020 could up our numbers for voters and residents, and if it does, it could push us into a fourth precinct. So it would be four precincts and one additional backup.
Would that census come out before the election, or would that be sometime after the election?
That would not be until after the presidential election in 2020.
So we almost could get by with four?
Yeah.
Because we'd definitely be three precincts through...
Yeah, yes.
So that if, and what is the cost of the, of the five?
I think at the time, the quote, and I think it will hold true for, you know, from this point forward, is, it was close to, I think, $30,000? I think it was about $30,000?
The five machines?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we know where they stand on the, are we looking at those seriously? I know Cap Outlay hasn't met yet, but...
No, but they'll be on the list when you need them, because we have to make sure that, we're just waiting for the date. Once we have a date, then we'll make sure they get funded.
Okay. Yeah, I just think for, with the, with the major election coming up, I'd rather see us have up-to-date equipment. So, I mean, from the sounds of it, you'd almost have, have to have a physical operative on the scene if we wanted to cheat, if you want, if someone to play around with the election results.
And even then, it would be highly difficult, because you have wardens, you have election workers, they're trained to monitor everything. You know, people walk through and they leave campaign slogans and papers and the, you know, my staff is always scanning the booths and looking at everything and watching people, so it would be very difficult for them to do that. And there's no possibility of somebody hacking in with a computer, because there's no computer connection.
That's actually what initiated our conversation, is with everything that you hear about, you know, the election monitoring and the hacking that's taking place. You know, I was relieved to hear, and it sounds like the entire state really is in...
The entire state, yeah.
Has taken a very conservative approach, yeah.
I'll go to conferences and the State Elections Division, the Director, Michelle Tassanari, she's quite knowledgeable, she's very smart in this area, and she deals with a lot of states and a lot of other countries as well. She'll talk to, you know, other countries, how they deal with their elections and so forth, and so she, she knows a lot about what's going on. Other states not always have what we have for security, so...
And if we break 12,000 in population, that's what would trigger a fourth precinct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And I, I didn't realize this until Lynn explained it to me, that we're at a, what, about 11.5 is our official...
We're at 11.5, and if you think about...
But that's from the 2010 census?
2010, which actually probably began calculating in 2008, which we were going through the mortgage crisis at the time, so our numbers might have been a little bit lower, just guessing.
So there's probably a better-than-even chance that we could be above 12,000 when the next census is taken?
I'm, I'm guessing, maybe.
Okay.
Have you already started to figure out what the precincts would be if we get to, get to that?
No, no. I, I have looked at the precincts, because I've been working with the Federal Census Bureau, and I get all these humongous maps, and, so I have been kind of looking at the precincts, but precinct one is big, so that, it might affect all three precincts. They might all have to push down in some respects, so we won't know until we know...
That's like a post-2020 issue, probably.
Yeah, the, the true numbers will come out in 2021, I think.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Great job, Lynn.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, we very much appreciate it, and I think we all feel a little better now, but at least in our voting system.
I would like to just remind everybody that early voting is available this year as well for this election.
When does that start?
It starts October 22nd and ends November 2nd, and it's during our normal work hours at the Town Hall, and then we have one second location for one day at Cranberry Village on the 23rd from 9:00 to 3:00. So please come out.
From what, what was the last thing you said?
9:00 to 3:00 at Cranberry Village on 10/23.
You only do that for one of the villages?
We offered it to South Middle Village, but they, they weren't interested. And I think they were concerned, because if you offer it, you're open to everyone. It's not just for your area, so, so they were concerned about traffic going through the neighborhood and so forth, and parking, and...
Yeah.
So if you may recall, last year we offered that to, to multiple villages to see how it would test out, to see if it was beneficial to do it, so, you know, it's, it's, has a little success, but not overwhelming success.
Yeah.
But we offer it.
Yeah, we had a few hundred at, at that one location last, well, two years ago, yeah.
Two years ago, yeah.
Yeah, so it worked out pretty well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on. Pine Street Right of Way. This is a request per the Planning Board for the BOS to consider granting reciprocal licenses to access properties for road layout, originally begun by Plymouth County Commissioners, but never completed. It's a reciprocal license agreement for Ediville, prepared by the Board's review and approval, and I would ask Mr. Milonowski to recuse himself at this time. And we're going to let you walk us through this.
Good evening, Board. How was America's favorite select board tonight?
Where's that?
Contained in your packets, you'll find a copy of what is called the license agreement here. This was developed with the assistance of Representative...
Stephen, could you pull the mic closer, please?
I'm sorry, very glad to.
Yeah, make sure you speak right into it.
This was developed in partnership, of course, with, with KP Law, as well as the applicant or Ediville's design team engineer, Art Borden, and Fussin O'Neill, Sean Martin, also participated.
Steve, you're really going to have to get it closer.
Yeah, okay. This isn't concerned, oh, now I see, I hear the difference alone, yes, thank you. This is in consideration of leasing some portion of public right-of-way on Pine Street, approximately 8,400 square feet. You may recall that part of the problem that's now occurring down on Pine Street, in addition to, of course, the right-of-way issue, is the flooding. So working with the applicant, the applicant's representatives, we came up with an agreement, and with Mr. Clark's stewardship at the last meeting, his recommendation that we consider strengthening our Plan A to help mitigate some of the flooding down there. You'll see some text contained in the license that effectively helps mitigate that, that flooding issue in exchange for granting this license. I want to draw your attention particularly to the second page, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, it begins, "Licency agrees, provided the town provides the necessary materials, to design and install drainage infrastructure for storm water running from Cherry Hill and Pine Street, which is causing flooding at or near the licensee property," in this case, the licensee is Ediville, "which system may include two to three catch basins within the right-of-way for Pine Street, drainage manholes, and chambers within the infiltration system on the licensee property. Once installed, the town shall be responsible for that portion of the system within the right-of-way for Pine Street, and the licensee shall be responsible for that portion of the system on the property of licensee. These obligations shall survive the termination of this license." In speaking with Ediville, I dare say, I believe that they will have gone above and beyond what was expected of them with this agreement. Effectively, working with John Woods, he will purchase the catch basins and the, the infrastructure, which was planned anyhow on the town's part. While the applicant's crew is deployed on-site, he has offered to pay for the cost of the installation, as well as the maintenance of the system that occurs on his portion of the right-of-way. So I believe that the license before you, with, with the recommendation of the Planning Board and the staff, should be ratified by the, the Select Board, and I believe that not only will this solve the problem, but I think this also helps beautify the area.
Anybody besides Mr. Clark got a question? Here, I'm going to start with you this time, please.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, Stephen. This one seems very trivial, but does it matter that it says Cherry Hill and Pine Street, instead of Cherry Hill Drive and Pine Street?
I don't know that it matters, but if it's, if it's a matter of concern, I think that we can probably have that amended, but I think it's pretty clear what Cherry Hill is.
Okay. My more serious questions were, I'd like to know if the abutters were notified. I understand this is not a public hearing, it was in a requirement, but it, it appears that some of the right-of-way will go through people's, just barely through some people's yards, and I didn't know if, you know, Gene Taylor, Peter Potenza, Frank Santos, et cetera, were they notified, and have they seen a copy of this plan?
Of the plan or the license agreement? The license agreement was drafted by KP Law and has been turned around to the Board for their review as, over the course of last week. There has been no public notification of that. There has been, though, I dare say, ample notification about the Planning Board process for the special permit. And of course, part of that discourse includes the, the area of the right-of-way that needed to be resolved before the Planning Board could take action.
So have the, have the abutters received notice of the, of the public hearing?
They have received notice of the public hearing.
And they all had the opportunity to look at this plan?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
Well, I dare not say, I don't know if everyone's had the opportunity to take advantage of it, but they certainly have been notified that this is, this is proceeding.
Okay.
Mr. Clark?
No, I was just going to ask if you had any feedback directly from any of the residents on the acceptability of this proposal?
I'll start by saying first that the applicant agreed to these terms, and so having shopped that then to John Woods, he also agreed to these terms. I've spoken to at least one resident, Mr. Germaine, and I don't want to speak for the gentleman, but it does seem... gentleman, but it does seem that this solves some of the problems that he's been experiencing.
Since he's here, could we perhaps ask him?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, if Mr. Germaine is present, if he'd like to come up and say something. If not, we're not gonna force you.
Alan, not take a microphone?
I thought he was talking about me. Just for the record, Sarah, I own that house now, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says Gene Taylor on this plan.
Yeah, because the records are really old in this town.
Okay, gotcha.
This has been ongoing, and everybody knows that. I think it's a great idea. I think that if John is willing to expand some of his catch basin capability for the runoff, and John's willing to put some drains in, John and I have talked a lot, and as long as you go down there during a rainstorm and you see where the water goes, because it crosses the street two or three times, so it'd be kind of silly to put a drain in that never sees any water because it runs around it. If John can take some of the drainage water that's on the berm side, then I had told, if John Del Friscoli can take some of that water, I told John Woods that I would give the town access between me and Kerry Santos', but on my property. And he could put a drainage pipe underground and just run it to an outfall, which is where the water wants to go anyway. So if we do nothing in a hard rain, that's where it goes. So if we can direct it with some catch basins on the residential side of Pine Street, then that water can go its natural route through some drainage out into the woods, and the other side can partake maybe in some of the catch basin that Ediville has, and I think that's gonna solve 99% of the problem. I really do. This is just, I can't wait, because every time it rains now, I gotta put my driveway back. And it's not, and I've said this before, it's not, this is not Ediville's fault. This whole thing got exacerbated by the sidewalk. That's what caused it. Before, when there was no sidewalk and just a berm and a dirt parking lot, the water would puddle up over there, and in a really hard rain, it would come back across the street, but it was very seldom. Since the sidewalk went in, that became the place where the water had no place to go. So it had to do its thing, and then it, right in front of my driveway, it makes a left, and off we go. And that just happens to be the spot in the whole neighborhood where it's like right there. So this will be, I'm real happy with this. I hope they didn't break his arm to do it. I'm real big on fair, so as long as John thinks this is a fair deal, then I'm okay with it. I certainly trust, you can't get a better guy than this guy here, because he's all about the town and the residents and the taxpayers and the future. I'll take my $20.
I was just looking for the dollar.
Later. But it's the truth. It's been such an easy process to work through with Stephen and John. John Woods has been awesome also. So, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, thank you. Considering that we had...
25 now, okay.
You could've gone for 40. Considering we had one of the residents speak, I think we ought to give John Del Friscoli a chance to speak if he'd like to. If you don't, that's fine. I think it's important to hear from both sides.
Absolutely.
Well, I think, you know...
Please identify yourself.
For those of you who don't know me, John Del Friscoli, 70th Avenue, Carver, also 18 South Main Street, Carver. So you have an existing problem there. The real issue here is when the right-of-way was laid out by the county, it never took into consideration where the road actually was. So the parking that Ediville is using has been used since 1946. So it's not something new here. It's just something that surfaced because today, obviously, we're more technical about things than we were in years past. This isn't a 75-year-old problem, at least, maybe longer. So with that in mind, we're trying to resolve it in a fair and equitable manner, and, you know, obviously, we've always been about the neighbors. I think anybody here that knows that knows that. We've always been, you know, open. Brenda's always been available, I've been available through all the redevelopment of Ediville and everything else, and consequently, there's never been any issues of any magnitude that weren't able to be mitigated, and most of it offline, to be honest with you. So this is just another example of that, and why we're doing the construction and the parking lot. At some point in the future, we'll address these problems out there. And working together with the town, this gets the labor out of it, which makes it simpler for the town, and the materials aren't, you know, don't have to be purchased at, you know, the normal, it can be purchased normally without having to go through the normal procurements that we're all familiar with, having done the school and the fire station, now the police station, so. In any case, that's really all I have, other than the fact that, obviously, we enjoy being part of the community, and we'll continue to work together.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the Board for us before we let John go back to his seat?
Yeah, of course, yeah, you can go, sit down.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, I do have a comment that is very refreshing to hear, both sides of the fence. I appreciate it, Al, you, Mr. Chairman, you asking them to do that. Al was also very clear that it's the fair thing to do, and after looking at this, I'm not sure that this tells the whole story, but I believe he did, so.
That's right.
I think that's a great, great opportunity.
Anyone else? I just think for the public knows, how many, this was before CONCON, and the Planning Board, anybody else?
At this time, I believe CONCON, CONCON because of the adjacent wetlands, and the Planning Board because of the special permit requirements. I don't know that any other board has viewed the project.
Okay, is this the last step, Board? If we give it a, if we give it a "aye," then you can go up and run.
Having spoken to each of the individual Planning Board members, yes, this is the last impediment, and I believe that with this approval, when we convene on the 9th of October, next Tuesday, the Planning Board should be in a position to be able to make a decision, I believe.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Five, zero.
And again, our appreciation to, I think, all the participants, and the Planning Board for helping bring this all together, and, you know, as Dave said, it's just nice to see a community solution, you know, coming from both private and public.
Great to see everyone working together.
Instead of butting heads, actually accomplishing something. Very good. All right, moving on. Next up is Council on Aging Needs Study Committee update. Mr. Milonowski, you may resume the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to turn this over to Stephen Cole. We've been fortunate to have many people volunteer for the committee that's looking at doing the study. There's a lot of advocates that are out there representing the seniors, and Stephen has been working with them, and is just gonna put together an outline of the next step that they're working on at this point. Stephen?
Thank you, Michael. First, I'd like to thank very much by name the participants on the Council on Aging Needs Assessment Committee, Savory Moore, Joanne Nelson, George Callahan, Pat Henderson, and Ken Morrison. We've had three meetings to date, and our next steps, we'll be meeting again on October 16th. At that time, we'll be reviewing the text of a draft RFP, Request for Proposal, to select a firm to assist us with conducting a complete count senior survey. We have worked with the Clerk's Office, and we've obtained a preliminary list of all those folks in town who were born after a certain year, putting them in the demographic of 15 and above, not 55 and over. And what we intend to do is select a firm who will use that list to reach out to all of our seniors and conduct a survey. Those questions will be developed in tandem with the committee and the selected firm. It's our expectation that we will release that RFP November 1st. We'll have the selection made by December 1st, and we'll begin the survey sometime in January, conducted through maybe February or March. As I mentioned, it is our desire to get a complete count, and we are also working with the various communities and the COA to identify those folks who are colloquially known as snowbirds, those folks who will be disappearing for the winter for a portion of when this survey would be conducted. We want to make certain that they'll also be aware of it, and will know to participate.
I have one.
Yep, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Stephen. Could you just repeat again when the survey will come out? Did you say January?
Sure, that's our intent right now, is to work with the firm throughout the month of December, to develop questions and strategies, and then we hit the ground, so to speak, in January.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and this is 55 and older?
That's correct, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. The COA typically provides services to those folks in our community who are 60 and over. However, we want to have a longer perspective. Those folks who are 55 will likely become part of that community at some point, and we want to make certain that we're doing the right things.
We're gonna hope they do.
Correct. And what's more, at 60, it's a very different quality and standard of living that, say, someone might have at, say, 90 or 85 even. So we want to make certain we get a broad participation so that we can revisit this after a year or two years. To me, this is really a bit of a baseline of the data, and we hope to build on it over the subsequent years.
Any other questions?
I have one more, and I think it was answered previously, but I'm gonna just ask it again. Is it going, is it going to be mailed, like, US mail?
Well, that's one of the things we want to discuss with the firm. They might have some innovative strategies, and so I think that we'll probably have to have a couple of different tactics in order to capture as many participants as possible, and I think that mail might be part of that. We've also talked to some of the communities, the manufactured home communities, to get their boards on board. Solicitations aren't allowed in many of the communities, so we'll have to work with those boards in order to make sure that their members participate.
Well, the reason I ask is because if you want, I found when we did the Open Space and Recreation Plan Survey, if you want a really good response, I mean, everybody has a mailbox, either at their house or at a post office, and not everyone has a computer.
Correct, yep. We've also spoken to, and that's an excellent insight, we'll certainly have some kind of an online component to it, but you're absolutely right, technical skills are varied across the demographics.
Someone might not be able to afford a computer.
And someone may not be able to afford it. We've spoken to the library staff, and they're certainly amenable to having a machine set up explicitly for that purpose as well, so as folks were to come into the facility, they can take advantage of a committed space for that. But it is my expectation we'll have a mail component.
If I could just comment, depending upon what modes, and as Stephen said, the different modes, the media that'll be going out, you'll only be able to fill out one survey. So whether it's mailed to you, or whether you do it online, or however that shakes out, you won't be able to submit multiple surveys, and that, we'll just make sure we keep the accuracy of this whole process in here, because I think, you know, what we heard last year was, you know, everybody was the expert in what the seniors wanted, but yet we didn't survey the seniors. And so, you know, this is an opportunity of getting a quantitative assessment as the money was approved for, so we can hear from the vast majority of the population versus a couple handful of people.
Okay, well, I know at least two members of the Board will be getting the survey. Hi, Dave.
That's just cold.
I think there's only one that's not.
Really? Well, I wasn't gonna ask.
I'm not going into any further detail.
Okay, good. Then we're gonna move on. Update on Root Party Poor Development.
Thank you. I'm gonna have Stephen give an update on that as well.
You're a busy boy.
All right. We're getting our money's worth here out of you, see?
We're getting back-to-back-to-back.
Alan, do we sign this one too?
No. That was your own copy, though.
You wanna precursor? Okay, perfect. So just simply stated, the status of the URP as it is now, there was a second draft of the Environmental Impact Report that was submitted to the state by the developer. Looks much like this. I have copies in the planning office, if anybody's interested, and I can certainly send it to you electronically. And that is certainly for the folks at home as well who's interested in this. The comment period for this draft EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, ended on September 7th. I'm waiting to receive those comments back, as well as recommendations from the state. In speaking with the development team, it's likely that they'll have to submit a third draft, and, as it were, the developer has so far acquired two properties, but property acquisition continues. In working with the developer also, it was revealed that the timeline for this development is likely going to be three to five years. Part and parcel, EverSource doesn't have enough resources, i.e. electricity, to light the sites. We need about eight megawatts, I understand. So looking at their timeline here, the implementation of required electric service will begin in fall 2018 and will continue through 2020, and in 2020 is when they expect that the site preparation and facility construction will commence.
Okay, so, but they are actively going to the different property owners in an effort to go ahead and acquire those?
They are, sir.
Because I know that that kind of, at least the impression I got from people, was that had kind of slowed down a little bit while they were dealing with the MIPA, and now it seems like they've gotten more of that done, so now they're getting more active again in that?
That's correct, sir. I'm not entirely certain when these properties were acquired, but it was fairly recently, and I do know that as part of the agreement, there was also relocation services. So these folks seem to be doing everything with due diligence.
Well, now you got me a little confused, because there were two properties that were obtained real early in the process. Now, are these two new ones, or are those the same ones?
These are, and frankly, my timeline could be off, Mr. Chair, but looking at these properties, and you may know better than I at this time, the Allen property and the Tassanari property.
Yeah, those were the ones that were done at the beginning.
Okay, perfect. Very good.
Is there gonna be, for the first draft, that's the only comment period? People don't get to comment on the second draft?
No, there was a comment period that closed on September 7th, and my expectation is that there'll be another comment period if there's a third draft.
Okay, so, that draft right there, the second's the one that came out early July?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so the next draft that comes out, generally, so it'll probably be another two-to-three month comment period?
I think part of that process is being informed by the state's due diligence, but that's probably an adequate timeline.
Yeah, because I want to make sure that it really gets out there, that, hey, here's this third draft, if you want to comment on it, please read it, because, you know, there was some grumbling that, you know, people weren't aware that it was out, or how to get a hold of it, so I'd like to avoid that if possible.
So just to add a little more detail to that, under the state MIPA process, people can actually...
Michael, could you speak into the microphone a little better, please?
Sure. Under the state MIPA process, people can send in their names directly to MIPA, so you're notified when the report's gonna come out. MIPA defines what the timeframe is, so from the date that it's available for public review, they have a certain timetable that they do for all projects like this size. So it's not the developer, it's not the town delineating the timeframe, this is a state report, they put the timetable together.
But what I'm getting at is, so if people notify MIPA, they want to be informed, they could do that now, so when there's another comment period, they'll automatically go ahead and be informed.
That's correct.
So I would suggest anybody that wants to make sure they find out about the next draft and to have a comment, the comment period, get with, Stephen, to find out who at MIPA you have to send your name and address to.
Mr. Chairman and Michael, we're in the process right now of revisiting the content on the planning and Board website, as well as the planning office website. It's my intent to use that as a information resource for the community. So when I meet with staff tomorrow, I will make sure that that information that Michael just cited is one of the top priorities that we add to our website, so that folks know where they can go.
Thank you. Anything else?
I do have a, did you say it was pushed out three to five years, this development happening, and the electricity needed is not gonna be there till 2020?
That's correct, sir.
Did I hear that correct, too? That is extremely disheartening. And how...
Don't worry, they'll increase your rates.
And how did that happen, that we did all this work and didn't plan for electricity? Or maybe you're not even the guy to ask that question to.
I think they did, it's just that they're really at the mercy of the electric company.
All the more reason to support electric generation in our community, huh?
So to be specific, what they're looking for is, it's not just running a small power cable in there, when they're looking for eight megawatts of power, it's a large transmission line that they have to run into the site. So this is something that has been identified by the developer, but it can't really begin until after the MIPA process, so it's just with EverSource and National Grid and the big utilities, for them to schedule the next major transmission line, it's building it into their schedule. major transmission line, it's building it into their schedule. And so, that's why it takes so long to do that. There are ways of accelerating that, and it just costs money, and it also depends upon how quickly someone signs up to develop the site. So, what they're talking about is conventional timeframe. Should there be an active developer of a significant size, there's way that they can work with the state to help expedite that, and Steve would help spearhead that.
Yep. It's kind of a catch-22, though, isn't it, where, you know, you're not gonna get anybody to sign up for that site until they have electricity, and they're not gonna get electricity until they have somebody to sign up for that site.
Well, yes and no. I mean, they'll be able to get enough power in there to do construction activity, but when it comes to, if you had, you know, a building of a half a million square feet, three-quarters of a million square feet, the HVA system to run that just requires an infinite number of power.
Yeah, I get that.
And the utility companies, because of the regulations, they're not gonna just build, you know, several million dollars of an infrastructure if there's no end user. So, that's kind of how, even with the residential piece, when you build a long piece, and you have to put in the poles yourself if it's not right off the street.
I get all that. We're all in on this project. We're 100% in, and if electricity isn't all in, then we got a problem.
But did you say 2020? It's only now a hair over two years now, so, I mean, time does go by fast, and I've learned that...
I'm just disheartened at the delay of electricity that, you know, I mean, it is what it is, and I understand the process of trying to move City Hall faster, but, you know, in my mind, I had this happening a little bit faster, so...
But if, and if I understand what was said, though, it's that...
Why don't you speak into the microphone, please, Mr. Clark?
If I understand what was said, is that the utilities aren't gonna commit until they know it's through the MIPA process. So, it's gotta go through that whole process before...
Yeah, I understand the process. I'm just telling you, I was just disheartened to hear of the delay.
Well, what I heard was that if the right project comes along, it can happen a lot faster.
Yep.
Okay.
It's not my purpose to dishearten any members of the board. I just want to manage expectations. I hope I'm allowed to come back.
Well, the first two presentations went well.
Anything else? We release you, sir.
Thank you so much. Unless there's anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, Stephen.
Good job, Stephen.
All right. Chief Weston and Deputy Jermaine and Deputy Boyle, come on down. Fire Department Overview of Personal Protective Equipment that'll be presented to the Capital Outlay and Finance Committee on October 11th. You gonna have Eric do the main talking? I know how much you like to talk. Welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome. Thank you for having us.
You gotta make sure you speak into the microphone.
So, pass this right off. So, um... Sir? Thank you.
Good?
Yeah. So, just before we get started, whenever we do a presentation, we like to give you some notes. You don't have to read them now, but you can take them with you. It's kind of just what I'm gonna go over, kind of the same topic. So, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity of letting myself, Eric, and Jesse to sit down in front of you to explain a significant safety issue we have going on within our fire department. So, our current personal protective equipment, which Eric's gonna show you here in a few minutes, is worn out, okay, and it's exceeded the 10-year National Fire Protection Association recommendation. And we're starting to find out, if you had seen NBC Boston this past week had done a story on cancer in the fire service, specifically in fire gear, that there are products made, there are chemicals being used in the production of our fire gear that looks like it's causing cancer. So, we have quite a few strikes against us. So, what I was gonna do is go through some items tonight, and at the end, certainly take any of your questions. But, so, some of this news isn't any news to us as leaders of the fire department. We've been fighting these battles for quite a while. But what is new is we did apply for a FEMA Fire Assistance Grant to replace all our structural and wildfire gear. That was a little over $300,000. We were notified two months ago that we were unsuccessful at that. And the way it works is, it's been in our capital outlay plan for the last 10 years to replace our gear at the 10-year mark or before. But we didn't feel it prudent to at least try for a grant with FEMA to replace it without having to put that burden on the taxpayers. The problem you run into is FEMA won't let you apply for a grant for personal protective equipment unless your gear reaches the 10-year mark. But the Fire Academy, Massachusetts Fire Academy, has a restriction, they follow NFPA, and if your gear has expired, hits the 10-year mark, you're no longer allowed to take academy courses. So, you're caught, okay? And, you know, we worked with our consultant in FEMA to decide whether this was a good idea to apply, even though we were just approaching the 10-year mark, and they felt it was. They couldn't guarantee anything, obviously. So, we applied with the best intent, we put a lot of effort into it, and we were unsuccessful. So, that with a combination of some other things I'd like to go through with you tonight, is why we're asking for your support on how we would replace our gear with some funding, some creative funding ideas. So, you just give me a few minutes, we'll go through that. Eric, if you'd just show them kind of the gear that we have, and Jesse, maybe you could just help with the brush gear at least.
Craig, make sure you stay closer to the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. While Eric's getting that out, you should understand that cancer is now the leading cause of firefighter fatalities. It used to be heart disease, it used to be heart attacks, now it's cancer. Right now, in our department, we have four firefighters that are battling cancer right now. We have one retired firefighter who's battling it, and we have one retired firefighter who has passed away from it. The rate of cancer in a firefighter is double that of a person in a normal occupation. And there's no way that I could say that, you know, these people contacted because of fighting fires in Carver, but certainly the probabilities are there, and these are things that we're finding out. So, what you have in front of you, Eric can kind of explain how our ensemble works, and... So, actually, it's okay without a mic. So, the structural gears is what we're typically wear for structural versus brush. Obviously, it comes in two pieces, a coat and a pair of pants. This is my gear. It is just over the 10-year mark, and some of the things that we're really starting to see, if you took a good look at it, there's a bunch of patches on the gear. If you look at all the Velcro on the inside, the Velcro has started to fail. This particular set of gear has been for repair five times, and we're probably not gonna send it again, just because we hope that we'll be able to purchase. So, that's that one, just a coat itself, and a second piece. And so, you can see, again, 10 years old, you're starting to see all the tears and the rips, all the Velcros falling apart, same thing inside the pants, all the things. You can see all the patches that have been put on over the years. Again, you know, we use it every day. Our fire gear is our lifeline, but on the fire gear, we really can't do our job, and it's just to the point now it's become a real safety concern. It not only protects us from, you know, high heat environments, you know, we were inside a burning building, but it protects us from the hazardous of, you know, we're working to remove someone from a motor vehicle accident, one world pathogens. Today's products that are burning inside homes or vehicles are a lot of plastics, and it's causing a lot of these cancer carcinogens. So, the gear has to stop you. That's your first line of defense. You know, the last four years, we've invested about $40,000 to $50,000 in repairs on over 85 sets of gear, gears that our firefighters wear. So, it's a significant issue, and it's something, that's why we're here tonight. Just because our gear has expired doesn't mean that we're gonna start protecting the people of Carver. That's not how we work. But as the fire chief, you know, I'm concerned about some liability, I'm concerned about the safety of our firefighters, so we have to move forward. So, things aren't gonna change. It takes a while to get new gear, but we really wanted to start that process, so... We did, our gear has been put into capital outlay plan that we've shared with the town administrator and the capital outlay committee. Let me see here. We had a plan with the town administrator that if we did not receive the funding from the grant, well, there were two cases. If we received the funding from the grant, the plan was, the grant would only fund the gear for the firefighters. So, having, you know, 85 to 87 firefighters, the grant would cover the gear for the firefighters with a 5% match from the town. The grant would not cover any PPE for any of the apparatus. Currently, we store a number of sets on each piece of fire apparatus that if a firefighter shows up, they don't have their gear with them, they're in a different vehicle, they're with their wife, or they're at work, there's gear on each apparatus of random sizes that they use and can just start doing the job. So, the grant wouldn't have funded that. So, if we received the grant, which would have been great, we still would have been coming before the town, probably a town meeting, to ask for a lot lesser amount to fund the apparatus, the gear on the apparatus. If we did not receive the grant, we did have a conversation that, through the creativity of the capital stabilization fund, we would hopefully be able to approach that to fund this project, and that's kind of where we are tonight. With another follow-up presentation we have next Tuesday, Thursday with the finance committee and the capital outlay committee. So, that's where we are right now. So, in February, we applied for a grant. Irene Winkler, who's a local town resident, has helped us on numerous fire grants and been very successful. Both Eric and Jesse went to grant classes. We spent a lot of time writing it. Our FEMA consultant felt it was a good idea to apply for it, but again, we were notified two months ago that we failed. We weren't successful at it. There were over 30,000 grants received with less than 10% receiving funding. So, it's the roll of the dice, but it's the right thing to do to try for it. Since then, no one, either way, we were gonna move forward with gear. In June, we established a personal protective committee, and that consisted of 12 officers and firefighters that were selected among the three fire stations to sit on a committee. And they were tasked with four things. They were gonna evaluate our current PPE to see where we stood. They were gonna meet with vendors, researching what our future PPE would consist of, so we're gonna look to see what the new products are, making sure we could acquire the best ones. And we would formulate a specification that would last us 10 more years. So, they would come back with a write a specification that this is what the gear we would buy for 10 years from now if we had to add pieces. And then they would make a recommendation to me by the end of August on a new specification, and that's kind of where we are right now. What I'd kind of like Eric and Jesse maybe to talk about a little bit is what the work of the committee has done. All of these people have donated their time. No one's gotten paid in these committees. They've met numerous times, so we'll kind of talk a little bit the results, and then we'll talk about some of the funding.
Good evening, everyone. So, as chair and co-chair of our PPE committee, I can tell you that we've been hot at work since about mid-June. We've met with several different vendors. We like to call them the big three, if you will, for the automotive industry, but we really have a big three of the fire gear industry as well. The gear that we're currently in, which is a lion product, Morning Pride and Globe are the three big gear manufacturers. So, we really, we set our sights with those three in mind. We went into each meeting with an open mind and listened to the vendors. They all pitched their products. You can imagine 10 years, so that gear is 10 years old, the innovations in technology and fabrics and things in the last 10 years. So, we're pretty excited about where we're headed and the new, you know, the new gear that we're hopeful to get. At the end of the day, with all that done, again, over the course of three months, we're just wrapping it up now with the final vendor. We really, really like the gear that we're in. It offers, you know, probably the biggest bang for the buck, if you will, and, you know, we're always frugal. As far as athletic cut and comfort and design, the creature comforts that we've been used to in this gear for the last 10 years, I believe that the committee is pretty much unanimous on staying with that vendor, and we're pretty happy about it. So, all the other accoutrements when it comes to gloves, protective hoods, which we don't, I do have with us, but it's buried in my helmet. So, other pieces of our gear, protective hoods that are, they have new cancer-blocking materials that they're made of. It's all about cancer today. As the chief said, you know, cancer's killing, the number one killer of firefighters today is cancer. And so, a lot of this stuff that we've been evaluating over the last few months is headed in that direction to try and reduce the cancer rates of firefighters, and obviously protect us in our daily jobs. Jesse, do you have anything you want to talk about the committee a little bit?
Thank you, deputy. Good evening. I just wanted to add a few things about the committee. I've had the opportunity to sit on several committees at this fire department. As we know, Carver Fire is a very special and unique organization. One of the reasons that people continue to knock on our door every year and want to join the fire department is because we have such a focus on our people. Most fire departments, the chief or the deputy would decide what everybody gets to wear, and they get what they get, and they don't get upset. In our fire department, we allow everybody to come in, to voice their opinion, to consult with their other brother and sister firefighters, to see what people's interests are, to see what their concerns are with the existing gear. So, it's not just the committee. That's the voice to represent everybody else within the fire department. Firefighters are very personalized. They really take a lot of pride in what they do. This gear, although it's owned by the fire department, therefore owned by the town, it becomes their personal set of gear that they carry for many, many years. So, it's important for us, for them, to be able to be comfortable in that gear, not just the physical comfort part of it, but this is something that belongs to them. This is something that protects them, that they're going to take pride in, and we felt that it was very important for our members to be able to have a say in all of that. Thank you.
Can I say one last thing about the grant?
I just want to say one last thing about the grant, you know. So, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant is the large FEMA grant that we've been writing for, we write it every year. That's been in existence since just after 9/11. George W. Bush, President Bush enacted the legislation that allows for the AFG grant. And so, we've been able to capitalize many times on the fruits of writing grants and being able to get much-needed equipment. I can tell you, you know, tonight, we wanted nothing more than to be able to come in and hang our head high and be proud of the fact that, you know, to come in and say we got a grant 10 years ago. We had a chief that was pretty within his first five years as chief, myself in my first five years as his deputy, and we were able to come here and say that we bought that gear, or we had the money through a FEMA grant to buy that gear that we're in today, and that was a pretty proud moment. So, not that we apologize, but we really did try, and I really wish we could have come here tonight and been able to say we were successful, but unfortunately, we're not. Sorry.
So, obviously, we're asking for your help and support. Again, we're gonna be meeting with the capital outlay and the finance committee through their fund with the same type of presentation, but obviously, we'd like to have your support. We never want to approach the town with just saying, hey, you gotta buy this or else. So, through the town administrator and Michael's wisdom, we tried to break it down into different priorities. And so, we came up with two priorities that we thought would work, and then we have to decide what's the best financial way to go about it, and that's kind of out of our hands. But the first priority is to fund the gear for 90 sets of gear for our firefighters. That's the first priority, our structural gear, and also the gear that's carried on our apparatus, structural. So, everyone will be encompassed in structural. So, we'd approach the capital outlay and finance committee with that. That'd be our first priority. The second priority with our wildfire gear, again, being 10 years old and expiring, would be to purchase that now, or the option is we could wait till town meeting and purchase it then. One of the things we've learned through the past meetings with vendors is all the personal protective gear is gonna be going up by 12% as of January 1st. There's gonna be a 10% markup due to a component within the gear, I think it's the kevlar or...
It's one of the fabric twills that they use.
And then they'll do their standard 2% markup after that. So, there is a financial impact on how we do this. We also did get a lot of good pricing with volume discount. Once you reach different thresholds, 50 sets, 70 sets, 80 sets, when you reached 100-set mark, we were able to secure a substantial discount in order to move forward. So, we are willing to do two priorities. I mean, we're not just saying, hey, we gotta do it this way, but again, there's some financial reasons that we might want to do it now all at once. The gear will take about four months to manufacture. Once we place the order, the vendor would come in and size every firefighter personally, and then it's probably about a four-month lead time till we get the gear. So, what we want to do is start now, and that way, you know, we take that liability away, get our firefighters in the gear they should be in, and do it now, hoping for like a February, you know, a January, February timeline to be in it. So, that's where we are. We'd certainly take any questions if we missed anything, and Michael, if you think we missed anything?
Just a couple of comments. When the chief and the deputies came in with their first proposal, they had actually really got it down to the exact number of units that they would need today. And having experienced watching the chiefs try to size people when they move out of the department, as I think he says, "We don't hire people by size of the uniform we have anymore." It's been a challenge, and I've literally watched these guys spend hours a week trying to move uniforms around and out of the thing, and I'm like, that's not the best use for our chiefs at this point. that's not the best use for our chiefs at this point. So what I did is I asked them to actually bump up the base number of units to cover what they see as potential future expansion and to have some additional spare uniforms available for new people coming in. So we did add a few uniforms to the 90 that you see here to accomplish that. And I just want to point out, they were trying to be as frugal as they could. I just came into it with trying to be a little bit maybe more practical, but also just making sure that that allowed us to hit a price threshold too, so that we're going to be getting, you know, better pricing by the quantity that we have. When it comes to, you know, ordering the brush and the structural together, again, when you start to look at the equipment going up in the first of the year, it made sense to order the additional brush gear right now as part of the Capital Outlay Fund, which will be presented to them on October 11th. So, you know, again, some of the additional costs here were my direction. The department was trying to be as frugal as possible, but, you know, as we look at keeping this gear for another 10 years, we want to make sure that we have enough extra sets at the same style and protection that we have right now. So with that, from a funding standpoint, what would be presented to the Capital Outlay Committee, which we have a joint meeting set up with the Finance Committee at the same time, is that this would all be coming out of the Capital Reserve Fund that town meeting has put together for using mid-year purchases like this. And then the intent would be at the annual town meeting is actually to have town meeting reimburse that account and put money back into that. So when we have another issue like this, we can address that and use free cash to pay for that. So, again, from a financing standpoint, it's something we can afford. It is off-cycle, but it can't wait any longer to get the new equipment. That's all I have.
Comments, questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Yes, sir. Eric, first of all.
Sir?
Sir. Dave, you said you wanted to come in here holding your head high. I got to tell you, regardless of getting that grant or not, you should, your organization has nothing to explain. Very good organization.
We appreciate that.
So, a couple of questions. If we buy everybody's equipment this year, in 10 years, we're going to be doing exactly the same thing again. Is there any way to mellow that burden out? Maybe every five years, every two years, keep buying it? And are they all out of, you know, yours is out now, but is everybody out?
So one of the things that we have to evaluate is normally, fire departments purchase PPE every five years. They get a new set every five years. We stretch it to 10. With all the cancer stuff coming, one of the things that we're going to look at in our capital plan is whether we get into a rotating basis. You know, do we look at five years from now, we replace half of it? So that five more years, so we're always turning over maybe half the department every five years. And I can't stay here tonight that that's the decision that's been made. I mean, that has to be talked to the town administrator, some other people in our department, how we're going to do that. We've always gone with the philosophy is we replace it at the 10-year mark. We replace it at the 10-year mark. But I have a feeling that the world's changing here. So, so we might be looking at doing something like at a five-year mark, maybe half, not the full department.
Yep. Probably a better approach to it.
And whatever that decision is, it'll be programmed into our 10-year capital plan. So it'll be forecasted, it'll be out there.
Okay.
So, one of the things, well, all the cancer stuff that's going on, one of the things that we have to do more often is launder our gear. So it used to be a badge of courage. The dirtier it was, the braver you were, the, I mean, you, you know, you wanted the dirtiest stuff on the board.
You had is saying you're pretty brave.
Yeah. So, so now, in the last five years, we're really being more mindful, and our gear is in the laundry machine more often than not. Every time we go to a call, we had a burnt food on the stove the other night, gear goes right in the laundry with all that, all those bad contaminants on it. You know, we're a little unique in our department, where we take our gear home with us in our vehicles, and then I, not that I have children, but families get in the vehicles, and then your families are exposed to this bad stuff. So the philosophy in most departments is to have two sets of gear, because every time you put your set in the washing machine, you're out of service because you really don't have anything to wear. So with a rotation, and we've talked a little bit about how do we do that, could we do that? With a rotation like that, at some point in the rotation, you'd be able to have everybody with two sets of gear so that no one's ever out of service. When they're in the wash, they have their second set, and then when their stuff comes out, they're back in their primary set. So there are a lot of advantages to doing exactly that, aside from the financial advantage.
Yep, okay. Well, the other one was you could just hire everybody the same size, right?
We try.
We try to fit a lot of people into some things.
The challenge is keeping them there.
Thanks.
Is there anything?
Well, yes. I just have to say this, that your department can always hold your head high. We're all very proud of you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, a couple of quick things. First of all, I agree with the comments of my other two colleagues. Your department absolutely should hold your head high. You do a tremendous job for the town. And just a couple of comments. You talk about the gear being 10-year gear and the frequency of cancer among firefighters. Not that we want to spend any more money than necessary, but does this gear improve as time goes along? You know, is it possible that five years from now, the gear will be a better, better protective gear than it was, you know, 10 years ago? Is it?
Sure. So, so one of the things that the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, the standard is going to change in five years. And our vendors today that came and showed us all of the new gear that's on the market now, in five years, there's going to be a total change. There are only, you know, there's some prototypes out there that we've seen, but nothing that's technically on the market and for purchase right now. But there'll be almost like raincoat bellows in there to stop the contaminants from coming up inside your garments. They're talking about instead of Velcro, changing to a magnetic closures on your gears. So there's a lot of technology, again, cancer, that buzzword, you know, it's, you know, the manufacturers are working on those things. But in five years, the stuff we purchase today is probably going to be a lot different mandated by changes in the NFPA.
So is it something you think we need to look at addressing more frequently?
Well, I think we're going to look hard at that five-year replacement. But again, you know, again, we try to be as frugal as we can, realistic as we can. Okay, you know, sometimes we have dangerous jobs, and, you know, we have to protect everyone the best we can, but we have to be realistic. So we try to go about it with approaches. Can we look at it in five years and figure out how we're going to implement some newer gear? We're going to look at that. If I could wave a magic wand, we'd buy every firefighter two sets of gear, and we'd replace it every five years. But that's just not realistic, you know. So we just, we'll get there. We'll get there. I think if we implement a little bit at a time, that's how we get places. So.
Good. And just one, one final question. How do we deal now with new firefighters when they come on? Obviously, if you have a new firefighter, you need new gear. How do we deal with that now?
So, so, so we, so, no, so we go through a hiring process. We just ended. Just a little bit on that. We had, I think, 25 applications go out. We had 17 returned that are going to be taking exams for new firefighters. We haven't had official meeting yet to consult on how many firefighters we're going to be hiring this year, but we hire every year. And that number could be three to five, somewhere in that area. Once we make a conditional offer to them, they take their physical and all kinds of policies they got to do. But then we have a sizing night. So we have our old gear, and we still have a bunch of it in different sizes, whether it was taken out of, excuse me, service, excuse me. So we lay it on a table. We have boots of every size. The vendor will bring in a whole rack of boots of every size, coats of every size, pants of every size. And our officers come in, and we line people up, and they start trying on things. And we have a form they fill out, and we get everyone sized. And then Jesse spends a month running around, and we rob off the fire trucks. The gear that we keep on our apparatus is certain size. So we try to find a 44 coat and a 36 pant. Jesse's got a chat, and he tries to put it all together. And when they start recruit training, it's a miracle happens that somehow we have all the sets of gear. And we usually might have to buy one coat or two pants, but it's not perfect. I mean, Jesse does a great job at putting it together, and it's a circus. That's how we do it. And that's what they get. And again, we don't give anyone something they're not going to be able to work in it, but it's not tailored to them. So it's, that's how we do it.
Thank you.
And again, a set of gear is, you know, almost $3,000. So if you're limited by, I can only hire three people because I can't buy full sets of gear for you, so we rob and do it.
So on that, we started adding into our annual budget some ability for some uniform upgrades. When they run into the problem, they can't find the 44, whatever it may be. I wouldn't use the circus. It's kind of like organized chaos as they go about trying to find the stuff. Have them witness it.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
That was actually one of my questions, is how you handled that. So that, that does sound like it's a...
Creative solution.
Yes, thank you. The, is, in the grant mechanism, is there any possibility that if we move forward and did all this, is there, does the grant allow for reimbursement for money already spent? Could you reapply for the grant again? No, it always, okay. Just thought I'd ask if, just in case.
So, so one of the things that hurt us, so like the chief said, your gear has to be 10 years old before you're eligible to apply for the grant. And then when we, when we got the bad news that we didn't receive, we didn't receive funding, we called our grant administrator up, Dave Parr. He's a great guy, sits in Boston. And we said, so can you tell us how we did and where we fell short? And he said, basically, you know, your narratives look good. Everything looked good, except for the fact that you were just over the threshold of the 10-year mark, and there are so many other departments that are way past that mark. They're in the 12, 13, 15, 20-year mark. And so those, obviously, those departments that have the older gear get, you know, they get priority funding. And then someone like us, who just met the criteria to apply, we fell short. So, and then like the chief said, we're in a double-edged sword. The Fire Academy won't let any of our members participate. We have six people right now that are in the middle of certification. They're in the middle of firefighter one, two, training, you know, trying to get their state certification, and now they can't finish up because the gear's expired.
And pretty much any department that hasn't replaced their uniforms in 13 or 15, they're in the same boat.
Correct. So I would say, well, probably in the last five years, the Fire Academy has really started to enforce that policy. Prior to that, it was, yeah, it really wasn't an issue. They would look at your stuff, and they would take a visual check. They'd look at everything, and they'd say, oh, yeah, you have a hole here. You can't go. You have this, that. But as far as looking at the actual manufacturer date, they really didn't do that. They were looking for physical type differences.
I mean, it seems to be at cross purposes there, because you have, you're not able to get your firefighters to be as well-trained as you'd like them to be because the uniforms aren't up to par.
Correct.
But I mean, what's the greater danger to the public? The fact that the uniforms aren't up to par, or the fact that maybe you're not getting your firefighters trained as best you can? What, I guess, what's the working theory in saying you can't go to the academy if your uniform?
Yeah.
The academy's standpoint is they don't want the liability of someone getting hurt in the liability.
Is the uniform isn't up to standard?
It has nothing to do with their ability. It doesn't, you know, and again, that's why we're not going to start fighting fires in COB. We're not going to stop saving people in COB. We do our job. Unfortunately, the world has changed liability issues, and, you know, they're making things expire. And it's frustrating because the gear we had before that, you know, it was 13, 14 years old. You know, we replaced it when we could fit it into a capital program within the town, and we made it work. And it was worn out, but we just made it work. Now you're being forced into things that unfunded mandate, basically. You got to replace it.
Well, it sounds as if we are able to move into this five-year replacement program, and we shouldn't be running into that for our firefighters.
No, that's correct.
Going forward.
That's correct. We've just got to figure out how to do that.
Then the other thing that occurred to me is that you talk about laundering the equipment that much more frequently, which is going to lend to wear and tear, I assume. You know, I mean, that laundering on a consistent basis is going to do damage, which would actually support a quicker turnover, I would think. So.
It absolutely does.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if perhaps the board could vote to recommend to the FINCOM and Capital Outlay Committee our support?
I was going to ask for that motion after I get my turn.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I mean, you guys have all had a chance. And as the two deputies and chief say, oh my God, now what's he going to do? First off, I do want to compliment the team you've got together for the new PPE gear. I was fortunate enough, the first set of gear, we went, we went away from the old black churn-out coats and the boots with no bunker pants. I was on that committee that got that first set of gear. So I really have a great appreciation for the amount of work. I mean, it's not just, you know, a night here or a night there. I mean, it's a lot of work. And then they go into the next phase, which is sizing everybody. So my hat's off to you guys on that. Chief, I wonder if you could explain for, you know, citizens why we need the gear, spare gear on the engines and the brush breakers? I mean, I know why, but so that people can tell.
So running a call fire department system, which is what we believe in, firefighters are issued a set of gear, one set of gear, and that set of gear is used for anything they go to. So it's very hard for them to know where that set of gear should be kept. We do not keep it at the station. We allow our firefighters to go directly to the incident. If they live within a half a mile of the incident, they will go directly to that call. The rest of the firefighters assigned to that station go to the station for the apparatus and arrive on the apparatus. So there's a chance if they're in another vehicle or at a job, they do not have their protective clothing. So we put, I would just say, like a minimum of three sets, helmet, coat, pants, boots, on every engine company, rescue tanker, that if a firefighter gets into their size, small, medium, and large, so at least they know what side is close to fitting them, that they can put it on on the way to the call and get out. When the apparatus pulls in, they get out, they're ready to go to work. Same thing with our brush trucks. We keep a set of gear on them for anything in a woods fire, to keep the soot and dirt off them. So it's, it works with our system. In other systems or creative department, a firefighter would be issued two sets of gear, one they keep at the firehouse and one they'd keep with them personally. So they try to have it at all times. It's hard for a firefighter to do much if they don't have their protective equipment. So.
Very true. I'm going to ask you something that you may get asked by the Finance Committee because I'm looking at the PPE budget, and I'm just wondering why the difference in the cost of the individual sets between what's issued and what's going on with the engines? Because it looks like there's, I mean, it's not a big difference. Only a couple hundred bucks, but.
Well, again, we tried to go with a different tactic. The firefighters will be issued a leather boot, which is a more comfortable boot, can wear it for a long time. The boots that we're going to buy for the apparatus are more of a rubber boot, which is what we're in now. It's just a rubber, like a, almost like a rain boot made for the fire service. So that's a cheaper model that we can buy, so we can save a little money by doing that, because they're not going to be in it all the time. So that was one of the cost savings. I'm trying to think what else was in there.
That was really the biggest cost.
And you couldn't have done that when I was still in the department.
It was a popular choice.
All right. Would entertain a motion, Mr. Clark?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen pass on their recommendation to support this, the PPE budget out of the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Second.
And pass it on to the FINCOM and the Capital Outlay Committee.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? I'll just say that, you know, I strongly support this. You know, I've been in their shoes. I was fortunate enough to serve the town on the fire department. You know, this equipment is really getting bad. And it's from a pure safety standpoint. We have to get this done now. It's not something we can wait, I don't believe, until the next town meeting.
We agree.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? 5-0. You have our full and hearty support.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Are these also turkey-proof? I understand you've been having some incidents.
Yeah, which was, who was it that had, got chased? Was that?
Both deputies really have a turkey fetish.
They've taken a liking to both of us for some reason.
So where are your turnout gear when you're chased by a turkey?
Oh, it's the right season. I mean, maybe you can take advantage of the opportunity.
When I walked out the front door yesterday, they were at the cannon out front. The minute my feet hit the grass, they chased me all the way down the sidewalk, across, crosswalking into the fire station parking lot.
And I understand they follow the trucks when they go down West Street?
Oh, yes, they do.
Well, Thanksgiving's right around the corner.
All right. Thank you much, gentlemen. Moving on. Town Administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just real briefly.
And we're behind schedule, so you're going to have to move it along.
We'll be really brief. We are, our budget update, all departments are working on their budgets, both capital and operations. and operations. Do not see any issues at this point. We're working on our forecast and doing that in coordination with the schools, so all those processes are underway.
Excuse me, and have we advertised that we set the article deadline?
Yes, we did. And it's also on the, on the agenda tonight, too. So we've posted it from that way as well. So again, budget, capital, those are all moving forward. The Wareham Regional Refuge District, we're still working on trying to hire a new, an executive director for that. That's still in process. I'm also hoping to announce something tonight, but we're not quite there yet. And that's...
Was there anything new in the police station?
Police Station Committee's still doing its due diligence and work, so nothing to update at that point, except it's, you know, working with the architect and then processing, you know, one- or two-story versions is what we're looking at, and then, you know, just trying to figure out from a sighting standpoint. So everything is in process at that point. So that's the extent of my update.
I have noticed that the new sports complex is coming along very nicely.
Oh, yes. That is going to have its first home opening game next Friday.
Oh, wow.
And it's against Martha's Vineyard. I think it's starting at four or 5:00 p.m.
Next Friday?
Next Friday.
Why so early?
Because they have to make sure they get the bus back to get on the...
The ferry.
If they don't miss the ferry, then they have to spend the night, and that's not in the school's budget. So I think that game ends at 6:30, no matter what the score is.
Okay.
And then also after that is going to be the ceremony for the naming of the gymnasium.
And also, they're making good progress on the new fields for the elementary school, I see. They're getting a lot of the loam out, and those really won't be ready, though, for about another year and a half, I would think.
Well, we're in the process of discussing whether or not they're going to be sawed or seed, and that may dictate a little bit of the schedule, particularly since we're not going to be having eighteen-year-old football players on there. The kids are going to be so light and small, they're going to float on the grass. So if there is sawed, it could actually move a little quicker. But, you know, that project is still, we're ahead of schedule, we're under budget. Same thing with the sports field, same, same issue.
It's nice not to have an update on the middle high school roof windows and doors, meaning that's completely done.
Done.
Outstanding. All right. Moving on to Board of Selectmen update. Mr. Robertson.
I have a comment from a first grader for the elementary school, which was very interesting. The exact question was, "What did you think when you stepped off the bus and looked at your new school?" And she said, "It looks fun." And isn't that exactly what we wanted it to be? Just fun for them. On a public safety, if you would, there are an awful lot of harvesting trucks carrying berries through town, and I drive for a friend, and I will tell you that people just give you no room, no space, cut you off as if you are in their way. I ask everybody to just give them room, give them a little patience, drive a little slower, and be mindful that these trucks are loaded with berries and very heavy. So that's all I have.
It's not like coming in two minutes later is generally not going to make that big a difference.
It won't make any difference.
Sarah?
Thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that, that because of that, it takes them a while to stop the trucks, so they can't stop on a dime. Anyway, I just wanted to repeat some of the dates that our town clerk has given to us. October 17th is the last day to register to vote. October, if you're not registered. October 22nd through November 2nd is early voting, and that's at the regular town hall hours, which Tuesdays and Fridays are a little bit different, but Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday is eight to four. So just call the town clerk's office if you want, if you need to do early voting. And October 23rd, there's a special day at Cranberry Village for early voting from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's it.
Okay. Mark?
Thanks. Just a couple of quick things. On Tuesday, October 16th, the Carver Cares Group will be holding their second annual candlelight vigil at the middle high school to commemorate those who have lost their lives to substance abuse. I was, I was there last year, my wife and I were, and it's a wonderful event, and I urge the town to come and support that cause. And also, just congratulations to the Wicked Gold Carver Group on their childhood cancer awareness. They held their Go Gold Illumination Light last, that Saturday. I saw streets all over the town illuminated with their little paper, I forget what they call them, but they were all over town.
Luminaries.
Luminaries, thank you very much. So, so great job by all involved.
Mr. Clark?
Just a reminder that on Friday night, October 12th, at seven o'clock over at the elementary school, the gymnasium is going to be dedicated to Dick Ward. Dick was the chairman of the building committee that put together that beautiful new elementary school that we have, and I'm just thrilled that he's being recognized after a career in physical education. It seems very appropriate to have the gymnasium there named after him. He is an example of just a model citizen, the type of person that has just really given of his time and energy on behalf of the town, and I think that's a great time. So the public is invited, again, seven o'clock, Friday, October 12th, at the gymnasium at the new elementary school. Please, I would ask everybody if you can be there and honor Mr. Ward for his years of service and in recognition of the role he played in getting that elementary school built. I would also say that we need to get our cable advisory board up and running to have contract negotiations with Comcast, who are coming up on the ten years. So any members of the public that are interested in serving on the cable advisory board, please make yourself known to me or to the selectman's office, because we need to get that up and running very quickly. And then finally, I want to just wish the Boston Red Sox well as they embark on yet another World Series trek starting this Friday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. How many people do you need on that advisory committee?
It can be probably about seven or eight, and we probably have two or three people that we've identified that want to, that are willing to serve, but we could use four or five more.
Okay, so make sure you get word in to either Mr. Clark or to the selectman's office, because we all know we really want to make sure we have a good team dealing with Comcast, given the comments I see on social media about the...
Absolutely.
About some of the service they get out of it, so... Being that our next meeting is going to be after Halloween, I just want to ask everybody to please exercise even more caution on Halloween night, all the kids out trick-or-treating. Also, by then, the leaves are falling, and this actually pertains to the rest of October. As we go further into October, we're going to have more leaves on the ground. If it gets wet, it's going to be even harder for Mr. Robertson and the other truck drivers to stop, so really, you know, keep that distance. We want everybody to be safe. And I'd like to say it's just good to see the new school. I think the school did a great job with the open house. I was really bowled over by the amount of people that were there. It was really good. And what's really nice is since, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but since the school's opened and the kids have come back saying how nice it is, and they've had the open house, nary a comment about, "It doesn't fit in with the town. It doesn't look, it doesn't, I don't like the paint job." Everybody's accepted, at least it seems that way, this new school that's going to last the town a good fifty, seventy-five years that was so desperately needed.
I'll just throw one other comment in. I was at the dry cleaners who's sort of diagonally across the street from the new school, and he was saying that every year he gears up for when school opens because it's just the Route 58 comes to a stop, you know, for pickup and drop-off times. And he actually wondered if school had opened, because traffic flowed so well with the new traffic plan that they have, bringing the buses in, out back, and so forth, that he actually wondered if school had actually opened on time, because he saw no effects whatsoever on Route 58 traffic. So kudos to the planners for the traffic patterns they developed.
I forgot one thing.
Go right ahead.
I forgot to remind everyone to vote on November 6th.
Good point.
It's a general election this year. Polls are open, what is it, eight to eight? Six to eight, eight, eight to six? What is it?
Eight to eight or seven.
Eight to six for the town election. Might be eight to eight for the...
I think it's eight to eight.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure. Or it might be seven to eight.
Or if you're in doubt, check with the town clerk's office.
Check with the town clerk's office, that's right. First Tuesday in November.
We know it's November 6th, though.
Yes.
That's the first Tuesday in November.
All right. Moving on to minutes licenses topics not necessarily, not reasonably anticipated, and we do have two items under not reasonably anticipated. Both of them are for use of Sampson's Pond. One is from the Eastside Sports Fishing Club requesting to use the pond on May 5th, 2019, from 5:30 a.m. to noon. It's a bass fishing tournament. Don't see where the, estimated number of people attending will be thirty, and the number of cars, fifteen, and they have paid their $50 deposit. So, your pleasure.
They have paid? Is that what you're saying? So I was talking with somebody recently about this exact issue. This is an out-of-state fishing group, and they are getting the same preferential treatment as an in-state cost, if you will, and I don't know if it's appropriate to raise that, or it just doesn't seem, Sampsons are very popular because it's recorded to have the state record put out of there.
Fifteen and a half pound.
Recorded out of there.
You're disputing that?
I'm saying it's recorded. You know, the records are always right.
Well, I don't think we could do, I fully agree with you. I think there should be a different fee structure for out-of-state groups using it, but we can't do, charge it to them now, because it's already, you know, they've already...
Could we send them a note saying that we agreed, but in 2019, the fees or rates are...
Well, I think we'd probably have to put it on the agenda to raise fees for this in the future.
Okay.
And could I just add to that?
Sure.
We may want to get some input from all of the residents around the pond as to what is their tolerance of having these multiple boating, fishing derbies in there. Secondly, we had earlier this evening the first meeting of the invasive species group, and one of the things that came up is in other states, you're required to, in essence, power wash your boat before you bring it into a freshwater pond, because you could have different, you know, in the bilge water, different plant, aquatic plant life growing in there that are invasive, and then they come in and do the bilge, then it just, you know, flushes those little invasive species out. So, you know, that's a thing that needs to be looked at as well for, for both of those, because we do have up in the northern part of the pond, you know, some, some significant growth.
Yep. I think we talked about that before. I think they, it's actually on the letter to them saying that, you know, there's no way to inspect that, but the fishing clubs are very sensitive to invasive species, so I can only assume they're doing it, but it is in the paperwork that is sent out to them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
That's going to be my question.
Motion approves. Do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I would just say, Mr. Chair, that I agree with Mr. Malonowski. I think we should find some way to reach out to the neighbors down there and see, you know, what tolerance there is for all these fishing derbies. I think if you're in town, that's, that's wonderful, but if all these out-of-town groups want to use that, that might be a, a problem at some point.
And I think we know somebody who lives on the pond.
Maybe we could find somebody.
It could be, it could be the water skiing's actually more of a hassle than the fishing, but...
Good way for somebody to meet their neighbors. Okay, we also have another one.
Should we vote on that one?
Oh, yeah. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. We also have another one by the Mass Bass Busters. This is for May 19th, 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Eighteen people expected with ten cars. And they also paid the $50 deposit, and this group, it looks like it's from Halifax.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. I think we really need to get down and come up with a better fee structure.
I think so. I think so.
I mean, here we have two applications, and neither one of them, I mean, there may be Carver residents that are part of the group, but still, the group is not based in Carver, so...
It might be interesting to find out what other towns charge, too, just to make sure that we're... Pardon me? Oh, good, okay.
And again, we do have residents that live there, and there's traffic on that road, and...
Way ahead.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. All right. We have the minutes of September 18th and September 25th for consideration.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 18th.
Motion, do I hear a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, just one thing on the minutes of the 18th, on the invasive species task force, and the same on the economic development task force. I think we had talked about adding members to the public, to those groups, but it states here that they're as, added as alternate members, and I don't think they were going to be alternate members. I think they were going to be full members of those groups, so...
I wasn't here, so...
I think you're right.
Yeah. So that may just be a wording, but I think they should be full members and not alternate members.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't remember any discussion of alternate.
Yeah.
No.
That certainly wasn't my intention, so...
Anything else?
I'll amend my motion to approve it with, as, as the amendment suggested by Mr. Townsend.
I'll second it.
Okay. Made and seconded. Any further discussion or comments about the meeting minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained because I wasn't here, so it's four-zero-one.
Freeze. I wasn't here on the 18th.
Oh, you weren't here either? Oh, okay.
If you were here, you'd have known that.
Okay, so three-zero-two. All right, now for the meeting of the 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.[1703.04]